Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the March 6, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing and a public meeting on March 6, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the Town of Yarmouth website. I will begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Present.
Peter Slovak.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Chris Vincent and Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I will now call the meeting to order, and I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding the 2024 Annual Town Meeting zoning bylaw article number one related to short-term rentals. I would like to now open the public hearing on this annual town meeting article. I note the time as 5:35. Following the protocol for public hearings, I'll first read into the public record the public hearing notice that was published in the Cape Cod Times on February 20th and February 27th. But before I do that, I would like the Planning Board members who are here to introduce themselves, and I'll start with Mr. Smith, who is to my left.
Good evening, Ken Smith.
Peter Slovak.
Hi, I'm Will Rubenstein.
Susan Britta.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, Joanne Crowley. I've already introduced myself.
Jim Saban.
Thank you. Public meeting notice, published in the Cape Cod Times on February 20th and 27th, 2024. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 6, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. in the hearing room of the Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664, and via remote access on its website or via telephone to consider the following proposal to amend the Yarmouth zoning bylaw. Number one, amend Section 418.6 of the zoning bylaw to extend the expiration date for the sunset clause for Section 418 short-term rentals. Copies of the complete proposed text for the amendments are available at the Planning Division Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664, during business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and on the Town of Yarmouth website, under the Planning Division. Any person wishing, interested or wishing to be heard on the proposal to amend the zoning bylaw should appear at the time and place designated. Written comments will be accepted and should be directed to the Planning Board care of Kathy Williams, Town Planner, at kwilliams@yarmouth MA.us, no later than March 5, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Signed by the Yarmouth Planning Board Chair, Joanne Crowley. So the agenda for this evening on this public hearing will present one amendment for your consideration, and the order of the meeting will be as follows. For many of, some of you who have been here, you know the public hearing protocols. Our Town Planner Kathy Williams will present the amendment. We will listen to and accept comments from the public after the article is explained. Written comments will then be reviewed by Kathy Williams, Town Planner. I will then close the public hearing, and that will be followed by the public meeting of the Planning Board where we will deliberate and discuss the amendment. As a reminder, please use the mic and identify yourself and your address if you wish to speak. I'd like Kathy now to present the article.
Joanne, and everyone has introduced themselves, our lovely planning board. Hopefully. So we have a very simple zoning amendment for the, sorry, should probably have this over here, a very simple zoning amendment for annual town meeting. It's really simply to extend the sunset clause for Section 418, which is the short-term rentals. We want to be sure that we can have the continuation of this use and also the continuation of receiving the short-term rental excise tax revenues while we continue to do a little further studies and analysis are being conducted. I think everyone who's here is very familiar with what a short-term rental is, but a little bit of background is it's when you're renting a room or apartment or a house for less than 31 days at a time. So it's your typical vacation rental that we're talking about. In 2018, the state required the short-term rental registry, and they also formed the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, which helps fund our wastewater programs on the Cape, and they also allowed communities to put an excise tax on short-term rentals. The Town of Yarmouth has a 6% excise tax on short-term rentals, and it generated about $1.5 million in FY23. We've also, as a community, designated 75% of those funds to our wastewater programs, a very important source of funding for that program. Back in 2021, there was a case law that really brought into question whether short-term rentals are something that would be allowed in residential zoning districts if it wasn't specifically mentioned and allowed in the zoning bylaw. So we wanted to be sure that we weren't putting our short-term rentals in jeopardy in that excise tax that we were receiving, so the town did add this bylaw, Section 418, in the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, and that expressly allowed for short-term rentals, and it also included a lot of provisions to help protect the character of our residential neighborhoods. This was done in a relatively expedited fashion to avoid having impacts to the 2022 summer season, and because of that expedited process, we did include a sunset clause that was added to the bylaw so that we can kind of see how it worked and get any additional information from these additional studies that I had mentioned. So basically, without the amendment to the sunset clause, Section 418 will expire on November 13, 2024, and short-term rentals would not be allowed in Yarmouth, and we would not be able to get that excise tax. But just to remind people a little bit of what are some of the protections that are in the existing bylaw, we have defined ineligible units, so anybody who has a capital A affordable deed restricted unit can't do it. None of the accessory apartments that we just got through can do it, as well as any units that have any type of building or code violations are ineligible. Again, we're continuing, any rental unit and in short-term rentals itself need to be registered and inspected by the Health Department, and they also need to provide a 24-hour local contact. Some of the general provisions to help with the neighborhoods is requiring that trash removal be done after each occupancy is completed, or once a week if it's an extended multi-week short-term rental. We also had a lot of, one of the other things we heard about was parking, where people were parking with regard to their short-term rentals. So we wanted to make sure that there was adequate onsite parking, requiring a minimum of one parking space per bedroom. We do not allow any parking on the street or on the lawns at nighttime, not on the lawns ever, but not on the street, overnight, street parking, and then no street parking at any times if you're creating some type of hazard. You're blocking an intersection, you're blocking access for emergency vehicles. To kind of minimize some of the turnover, we did have a duration of a minimum of two nights. Obviously, no RVs, campers or tents can be used, and you need to meet all of the state and local regulations that we have for building, building, health, fire, water department, and also any pet control laws we have in town. One of the big things was restricting the types of rentals. We really wanted to be sure that these were residential uses only, so we have no large-scale events are allowed. So you can't have a large-scale wedding, or a big corporate event, or a big class reunion, or, and I know sometimes there's been some issues with photo shoots at short-term rentals, so those are specifically not allowed, and no events that include tents, like the large tents that you might need, or any type of amplified music which might impact the neighbors. And again, we just kind of put in a general caveat of any adverse effect on neighborhood that basically impacts a person's ability to enjoy their own property. And again, as I mentioned, there is the sunset clause that's in there that expires on November 13, 2024. So what does this proposed bylaw amendment do? One very simple thing. It extends the sunset clause from November 13, 2024, to November 30 of 2026. This is being done at the annual town meeting instead of the fall because we're not sure of the date of the fall town meeting, and it may, we just want to avoid any conflicts with the presidential election. We know how busy that the Town Clerk's Office gets with the early voting and stuff, so they typically, on a presidential year, like to have this fall town meeting after the election, and that unfortunately would probably be after the expiration date. So we just want to make sure that we're not having the situation where this bylaw is expiring. So what are some of the further studies and analysis we might be looking at? The Affordable Housing Trust voted $50,000 to do a short-term rental study. This was one of the items, I think the Planning Board might remember, that was included in, as a housing preservation strategy in the Housing Production Plan, and we did have some comments with regard to that specific language in the Housing Production Plan. So it really is taking a look and compiling information and data on Yarmouth. What are the short-term rentals? What's our housing situation? What are our rentals and that type of thing? And then trying to evaluate the relationship between the seasonal and short-term rentals and our year-round housing and availability on prices, and then, of course, looking at the revenues that are generated from them, and then recommending any strategies that might be able to amplify all the benefits that we get from short-term rentals, but also mitigate any identified negative impacts or issues that we've been having with short-term rentals. So we're going to continue to collect data through the new online permitting system of OpenGov, and we're also going to be looking for some direct input from town staff on identifying any complaints received or any issues like that. The Building Commissioner Mark Grills is here, and he has, does have some information on some of the issues that have been happening recently. It might be good to have him maybe give a little bit, a brief overview of the complaints that he's received, which have been relatively few. Do you want to come up to the mic?
Yeah.
I bet. I've never heard that before.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mark Grills, Building Commissioner. Last year in Yarmouth, we logged 1,303 short-term rental units. Out of the 1,303, we received 10 complaints. Four of them were for the same property, and the complaints were all minor in nature, had to do with parking location. The four-unit one, the four-plaint one had a minimal amount of trash on the ground. It was just the neighbors were hyper-focused on the property, so that's what it would seem anyway. And to the complaints, I called them myself. It had to do with parking in the road, and the people had the cars moved within the hour. So each one of these has been a quick phone call to remedy the situation. It didn't have to go through a long-term process of writing letters. They like to keep the reports to the VRBO and the Airbnb people. They like the complaints to be kept to a minimum because they get a bad rating, I guess, through the program, so they like to keep a well-kept property. So there are many, a lot more of them in the south and the west Yarmouth area than, Yarmouth Port doesn't have that much availability for properties that could be considered short-term rentals, I guess, but there are some, but there's just, there's more of them south of, south of Route 6.
Thank you.
That's about all I have. Any questions?
Yes, I have one. Of the 1,303, can you, do you have the breakdown of southwest and Yarmouth Port? No.
No, the OpenGov cannot map them yet. I was trying to get it to work that way, but the program, it won't do it for me. I tried.
I did look on the town, on the State's Registry, and I think it's almost evenly percentage-wise based on the amount of residential housing. We have, obviously, there's less in Yarmouth Port because you literally have less housing units in Yarmouth Port, so maybe there's like 300 in Yarmouth Port, and then pretty much evenly distributed between west and south Yarmouth.
Yeah. Well, I just, I'm just referring to the, we had a Q and A, an FAQ, rather, when we first presented this at Annual Town Meeting, and back then, we had over 100 in Yarmouth Port, and then kind of an equal amount between south and west. Does that sound?
Yeah, it's about accurate.
There's more in Yarmouth Port. Now, I think proportionally, things have gone up because I think when we did the FAQs, there was about 900 short-term.
Yeah, this is, this is from 2021. Yeah, it's dated. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Rubenstein.
Mark, throughout the process of getting to this bylaw as well as the ADU bylaw, we talked a lot about the burden that some of these things could cause to your department specifically, and now that we have a couple of years' worth of evidence, could you just talk a little bit about whether that's true, whether, what the impact has been on your department? Has there been any hiring? And to help meet whatever the need is, and certainly it sounds like it's grown from 900 to 1,300, so could you talk about that for, please?
Yeah, since the inception of this new bylaw, the short-term rental bylaw, we've been able to hire a new, another housing inspector, so now we have two, which it's helped. They're still busy, but it's definitely take the burden off the one. And as far as the ADUs, it's really, nothing's hit yet because we just got confirmation from the, from the AG's office today, but yeah, we're always busy though. But we did hire another building inspector, which is like, he's kind of useless right now, and that's to be expected.
He's learning!
More probationary way.
Two or three-year learning curve, so he'll be useless for a little while, but...
But in general, you would not describe, you would not describe your department as overwhelmed because of this bylaw?
No, definitely not. No, we're just busy, but.
Great.
We're not overwhelmed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Good question.
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and let us know your address.
Sure. Linda Bolliger from Baxter Avenue. Question I have for you is, as you're collecting all of this data and then putting it together, will that be made public, and in what format will that be?
Kathy, I'm going to refer to you.
Yeah, sure. I mean, the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be doing the study, and I'm sure they will have presentations. I'm sure they'll want to be having presentations with regard to the Community Housing Committee, and then we can certainly have a presentation here in the Planning Board. The whole idea is to collect the information to help inform us as to whether we need to make any changes, and this may not be just zoning bylaw changes. We maybe say, we may say, you know, from a zoning standpoint, we're pretty good. This seems to be working, but maybe we want to start talking about some general bylaws. We talked very briefly about some bylaw changes that were done, general bylaw in Provincetown, and some of the restrictions to that. So we're hoping that this study that's being done by the Affordable Housing Trust will give some of those suggestions of, you know, these are some of the things you might want to consider, and then there'll be a whole process of, okay, let's consider those. Are those right for Yarmouth or not?
And in terms of the data, will it be sort of, will it be granular? I mean, will a community like Hyannis Park be able to actually look at what's going on in our neck of the woods?
Well, at some point, if I may, Kathy, the, this would have to be a consultant that we would hire.
Correct.
And our scope of work for the consultant could include provisions similar to what you're asking, that we look at particular neighborhoods perhaps, but that scope of work is usually a public document as we develop it, and again, it'll be managed through the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee, but we, all of that will be public, and to the degree that we can focus on particular areas of concern, we will try to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. Christine Greeley from Glenwood Street in West Yarmouth. First and foremost, I want to thank you. I know a lot of hard work goes forth with the Planning Board and with various departments in the town who have to, you know, be the monitors and the policemen and everything else on these things. And I will, in full disclosure, say that having purchased a home cottage in 1981, that for two decades, I was a short-term rental, you know, owner, you know, very carefully monitored by my husband and I so that we could really be respectful to our neighbors in the neighborhood. And I think that's the concern that comes up regularly, is that right now, it's like a nuclear winter down in my neighborhood. I mean, I'm one of three people who live year-round on the street, and everybody else is gone, and then you start seeing, you know, people re-arriving. So of course, you're going to see additional traffic and people in the neighborhood because these are people who are now come back to enjoy the beauty of the neighborhood. However, it is also very, very popular for short-term rentals, and some of the issues, obviously, over the years, have been the density of what's going on. I mean, I've had situations where I've tried to get back into my home down Windward and Harbor and not been able to because of the parked cars on either side of the street, and that section, and an ambulance that was attempting to treat a medical emergency there, and I wound up turning around and banging my back up on 28 and coming back in the other way. So there are significant issues, and one of the things that strikes me that I've always wondered, I'm always concerned about, one, who do you call when you, I mean, I don't like to bother the police with things, but it's like, is, you know, it would help for the public to know, you know, who it is if you've got an issue in the neighborhood about short-term rentals. Who would you call? That would be a good piece of information, I think, before the season starts for those of us who are very confused. I mean, poor Mark's going to be answering the phone or whatever, but, you know, if there is somebody or some department that's designated, I think that would be very, very helpful. Secondly, I've always had this fantasy that in somewhere or another, because I know you're supposed to inspect, that we could actually be very cooperative with you because if we're finding like huge numbers of rentals at a house, hasn't that town actually been inspected and permitted and allowed it by the town, or are they just simply bypassing? And then also, how many people are allowed to be there with how many cars? Because I've seen situations, we've had seven or eight cars, and I'm sorry, a house that size does not have room to sleep, a potential of 14 people, depending upon how many people came in the car. And I've often wondered sometimes if there couldn't be some kind of a little site that just says, you know, certain addresses or how many capacity or something that'd be easy for us rather than troubling people to say, oh, I'm worried about, you know, 10 Smith Street, and, sorry about that, and, and, you know, they've got six cars out there all night long, and yet it looks like it's a little tiny place. And so it's sort of like, almost as if there was some kind of easy way as a neighbor that I could check to see, have they indeed paid their taxes to the town? Because this revenue is important to us, and also to know how many people truly are permitted, you know, into that facility or into that house. And so, as I said, I'm very happy. I think, you know, the fact that there is more work to be done, I think it's great that you're not allowing this to sunset, but that you're going to continue the opportunity to take a look at the information, the data, and particularly with this new OpenGov site and all, to really start to take a look at some of that. But I know we're going to be very popular. I mean, our Chamber of Commerce is out advertising, you know, come see us. We've got beaches, we've got water. We've also got a quality of life that's very important and a protection of our environment, because a lot of these cars do park on the lawns. I'm sorry, you know, that's one of the things I observe, and it's kind of fascinating to see what the regulation is, because I don't think those are being complied with at the same time. So in order to protect the quality of life, the environment, and everything else, I think that there's still elements as we go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Before, I'm sorry, before, I'd like to, I'd like to address her questions first, if that's okay. Mark, is there any chance that you might be able to talk about the transparency on permitting information? And also, who do you call?
The police generally cover traffic complaints, but however, the calls that I received were people parking in the road. The neighbors reported that some people were parking in the road. I called the owner of the property, and they had the results. I had two calls about that. So I've only received two calls. I don't get an abundant number of calls, but if they're, if it's nighttime and they're blocking the roadway, you call the police. So they're traffic enforcement, and just let them know they're blocking access for emergency vehicles, and they'll have it addressed rather quickly. But the other two people that I talked to, the two owners of the properties, were very instant. They don't want the problems with the town. So parking on the lawns, if we know about it, if you report it to us, we can't be there at night, obviously, but if you report it to us, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that the owner knows. The other thing that, in OpenGov, we don't have the ability to chase down every one of the properties, but we just opened up a new part of the permitting program to where now we're logging complaints. So now we'll be able to track complaints, the number of complaints on a specific property, the area of town, that, you know, we'll be able to pick out what areas of town are the biggest problems. But we just started doing that, like honestly, in the past week. So we're trying to get OpenGov fully running. It's not, it's not 100% foolproof right now. We have other issues with how OpenGov interacts with another program that we have to use every day, so we're trying to work those bugs out with IT at the same time, so.
Can I ask Mark a question? When would, like, if somebody gets a registration for a short-term rental, when would that go on Laserfish, which is open to the public, and they can look at that?
As soon as it's entered into OpenGov, either by the public or by us, it automatically goes to Laserfish, and that's the problem that we're having, is that Laserfish is now, when something comes from OpenGov, Laserfish is creating a new street file for that property. And so we have stuff all over Laserfish right now that we can't find, so we're trying to get that cleaned up right now.
So ultimately, there is, on our town website, something called Laserfish, which basically has a bunch of scanned-in information, as well as all of the OpenGov and the former Acela stuff. So you can go under, it's under the Health Department and see if there's a registration there and whether they have been properly registered or not. The taxes do not come directly to the town. They go to the DOR, and then they distribute them back to the town.
The Mass DOR, you could actually look up every address through them that's registered. So if you were trying to find out if there was one in your neighborhood that you're questioning, you could go to Mass DOR's website, and they could, they could tell you.
Yeah, because quite often you don't want to bother the town. It's like, it'd be easier to know, should I complain or not, or is this okay, you know?
Send us an email. Doesn't hurt.
Okay.
We'll take the email.
So we won't know if an STR is paying their taxes, right? If they're paying, if they're recording revenue and then paying taxes unless we look?
No, the only way you could do is, are they registered with the state, and are they registered here in the Town of Yarmouth?
The state monitors Airbnb, VRBO very closely, because they want their money too. They want their revenue, and the state sends us the check based on that. So that's how we know this 1,303 rentals and the short-term rentals in the town, it came from the Mass DOR website.
Madam Chair, trust me, DOR looks at your registrations and compares against their records on a monthly basis.
Yes.
And process that. So if you're not paying the taxes, you're going to get a letter.
Yeah, they're not shy.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I think I just don't want to be the only one who hasn't come up here. My name is Anique Cooper. I live on Highland Street in West Yarmouth. I actually am a short-term rental owner. I have two properties, a cottage at number 12, which my parents bought in '63, I guess, and we came up here. We didn't live here permanently, but we came up summers, every summer, loved it. And then, how long ago was it? At least 15 years ago, we bought the house next door. My husband and I bought the house next door, and now I own both. When my mother passed, she left it to me. So I've been doing short-term rentals with, first the cottage, and now my house as well, for a good 10 years or so. And so this concern, this is of interest to me because, you know, because I do it. I'm very strict. I have a four-page rental contract which has everything in it that I want a renter to know, such as you cannot have day or night more than the number of people who you have, and you've written the names in, who are staying there overnight without my permission, which I will give if they say, you know, our cousins want to come over for lunch one day, sure. But if it's like a party, I've been asked so many times, would you allow a wedding or a graduation party? And the answer is always no, though I recognize that some people maybe are not quite as, you know, strict about it, but these are my homes. I, I guess I have only one direct question about this, this case law. That interests me because, I mean, Cape Cod is, it, part of it lives on the summer, the summer, you know, that's just, we are a summer community. On my street also, there are, let me see, one, two, three of us in my, one, two, three, sorry, four. We actually have more all-time, all-year residents than most streets in a, in a short, but there are a lot of rentals, and I know that the rentals have increased a lot since I started 10 years ago. But, you know, renting your house on Cape Cod, that's been done for over 100 years. That's, there's nothing new about that. The first time my parents brought us to the Cape, we rented the house that they then bought, which actually, they bought it from my aunt and uncle, who, you know, in 1963. So, so it surprises me a little that there would be a, you know, a, what's this, a case, some case law saying that, well, maybe it's not allowed. So what is that case law? Can you name it? Because I'd like to look it up.
Kathy, if you would. It's Styler, S-T-Y-L-L-E-R versus the ZBA of Lynnfield, L-Y-N-N-F-I-E-L-D.
Okay.
I think, I think that the tradition has changed. I think originally, when, a lot of times when people were renting, it was a family rental. You were renting to a family for the entire week. Everyone would come down, and it would be a wholesome family vacation. And I think when you started getting all these different platforms, you started getting much shorter rentals. You started seeing different types of rentals. It became more of a commercial business for some people.
Right.
Versus, oh, I'm just going to rent it out during the summer so I can still enjoy it in the shoulder season, and it's still my house. It's not a business.
Well, yeah, no, but it does help pay for the bills, so.
Right, exactly, exactly. But as it became more and more of a business enterprise, this is when, when somebody sued, obviously, the ZBA of Lynnfield, saying, no, this, this is not accessory to my residential neighborhood. This is a commercial use in my residential neighborhood, and that, that's what brought this all to...
And they won that, or?
They basically said, because there's nothing in your, without there being something in your zoning bylaw, you may be, have some difficulties with regard to allowing this. So what we got out of that and input from our town council was, if you really want to continue to do this, it's probably best to codify it. Because I know Mark's office was getting a lot of questions after this came out. Are you guys still going to allow me to do short-term rentals? And it was kind of like a little fuzzy. Yeah. So, so we, we said, you know, this isn't accessory. This is something a little bit different. So let's just codify what we've been doing all these, all this time and also have these rules in. It's good to hear that you are being very strict, but it's not just you being strict. It's the law of the bylaw. You need to adhere. You can have weddings. It's not just a matter of your particular.
Right.
So all of these criteria, everybody needs, needs to know about. And on the town website, when you register, one of the things that's listed there for the documents is this zoning bylaw so that people can read it and they're well aware of the fact that they have to meet these criteria.
I see. Okay. So, Chris, you wrote the name down.
Thank you.
We've had lunch today. We know each other well. Anyway, all right, I did want to find that out. And, you know, just to talk a little about from my experience as a short-term owner. I mean, whether there were, whether even without those regulations, I would be strict because it's my home. And I, you know, I think there are a lot of people who are like that. I'm also on some sites where other homeowners, we ask each other things and a lot of people are. If they're, if those that aren't, I understand that can be a problem for the neighbors. But if anybody during the process of wanting to, you know, get information and what have you, wants to talk to a few homeowners, I'm happy to do that. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
For being strict.
Certainly.
When, when you say no weddings and no graduations and that, those are on the short-term rentals. But if you were a homeowner, are you allowed with a permit to do that?
Okay, thank you. There's a difference between having a wedding every week versus having the wedding once in a lifetime or twice in a lifetime.
That's right. Now, I'm not intending to or anything like that, but I just wanted to point a clarification. Thank you.
Okay. And just as a.
Jim, three times in a.
Further, just as a, as a further point of clarification as to why we went and did this back in twenty twenty-two. We learned, and I saw Mark, Mark jump up to the mic. If your zoning bylaw is silent and doesn't have the words "short-term rental" in it, then it's prohibited. So this was driven in part by the fact that the state established these surcharge taxes on this thing called short-term rentals. So in state law, there's this language called state short-term rentals. They get some money, we get some money. But if you don't have it discreetly listed in your bylaw, it can be considered prohibited. So that we rushed to get this in once the Styler case came down and we learned about it, which is part of the reason why we put in this sunset clause, because we knew we were rushing it. This is an incredibly important source of revenue for the town and our wastewater plans. It's incredibly important and we didn't want it to be threatened. So, so that's part of the background story. Mark, our building commissioner, Mr. Grillo.
I believe that case law also references that short-term rentals are like mini motels. So transient uses are thirty days or less. They gave them thirty-one for the short-term rentals. So people staying in the building for less than thirty days, it's a transient use, much like a motel. So you're operating a mini motel in a residential neighborhood, which you would require zoning relief for in the form of a variance if this was not in there. So this was actually very important to get in there. And it's, it's actually good. It's, it's, it's helping the town realize some revenue. But also it helps us kind of keep track of what's going on and where the complaints are coming from. So. And like, short-term rentals are probably the least of our, you know, the least of our problems, honestly. As far as complaints go, ten out of thirteen hundred. And we have three thousand. We get so many complaints about, actually, the long-term stays are the ones that are, that we're perpetually being called back to certain ones, not every one of them, but short-term rentals are the least of the problems.
Thank you.
Sure. So, excuse me if I'm not familiar with how this works, but, I mean, I certainly hope that, you know, when, when something, I presume something will come to a vote about short-term rentals. How does that work in two years or is it just constantly extended?
No.
To be, to be codified in the bylaw.
Well, our intention is to, to take it to November of twenty twenty-six. So that we can conduct a thorough review of where we've been and have good evidence to support it being permanently codified in the zoning bylaw. That's our goal.
Which is a vote amongst you or proposal or a vote that is put to?
We only make recommendations.
Right.
The town meeting, town meeting decides.
I don't know if there are any attorneys on this board, but given that rentals, short-term rentals have been going on, on the Cape for at least a hundred years, at least. I mean, if it is not codified, could that be, come up as, you know, a case to be fought against? Since, like, why change it now? Maybe regulate a little more because the state's getting money and the town's getting money. But it just seems to me like if you have a home, you know, you should be able to do what you want in it or with it.
Zoning tells you what to do on your property quite a bit more than people may realize.
Don't, we don't have a, we don't have a, a projection on that one way or another. We, we just, we're just trying to move in a, a direction that protects this important revenue stream and quite frankly, provides a backstop for you as a, as a landlord. Because you now have a zoning bylaw behind you that at least has a baseline. You can be stricter than that. But at least you have a threshold below which nobody can go.
Right.
Didn't have that before.
And there will be opportunities for further public hearings before and unless this temporary bylaw becomes permanent, both here and then, of course, any discussion on town meeting floor. So there will be many more conversations, not to mention after we get the results of the study and et cetera. Plus there's other bodies, as mentioned earlier by the Madam Chair, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Community Housing Committee. So there'll be lots of other opportunities, you know, for these conversations to happen well before anything becomes permanent.
Right. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Did any other board members have a question or comment? Yes, Ms. Britta.
The study, I'm interested in this study. Is the fifty, who's, who is the fifty thousand dollars coming out of the affordable, okay. The only comment I would make is I would, I would hope that they would listen to the comments that, that Linda made and Chris made about the quality of the data and transparency so that it is a worthwhile study. That, I mean, it seems to me intuitive that this is the kind of thing we should have. It protects everyone. I can't imagine someone trying to build a case that we should not have this bylaw because it is a win-win-win for everyone. It provides protection for you, it provides protection for the, but it would be nice to see a study that actually supports that conclusion with some good data, that they're real, that whatever problems are out there, they're, they can be handled, they're not overwhelming, they're not going to, you know, make, they're not going to cause any confusion, that Mark will be able to handle them. And if we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on a study that, you know, I think that would be worthwhile. These are two very good comments about the quality of the study. We don't want just some sort of rhetorical, this is a great idea, let's keep moving forward. We want to know why. Why is it good? Are there weak spots? Enforcement is always a weak spot. It's a weak spot in every town. And that, as Marcus said repeatedly, good enforcement, we, we rely on the citizens to, to help the law enforcement people. That should be incorporated into the study. That people always say, oh, how's it going to be enforced? It's going to be enforced if you pay attention to it. And when I say you, I mean the citizens. So the study, I would like to, you know, really emphasize that the, it, it has to be granular in nature and has to be transparent so that we can figure out what's going on.
Yeah, Mary Wagon is going to be working up a scope of services, so to speak, before going out for, I believe, an RFP in order to solicit a consultant for that work. And I can, we're certainly going to be talking about it. I will relay to her that we would like area-specific data so that it's not homogenous through the entire town. It's, it's getting into the, some of the specific areas and also being sure that there's a lot of public opportunities for the public to, to see this information. And like Will said, there's going to be plenty of other opportunities. Obviously, we're going to be going forward with any type of zoning change, either to edit the sunset clause or whatever. We're going to want all this information to present to the public as well.
Thank you. Any, any other public comment, questions, concerns, board members?
I have a, if I can, I always hate things that are open to interpretation. So in my business, I, I don't write that a property is within walking distance to a property, to something because, well, walking distance for me is completely different than what's walking distance for my wife.
Or me.
To the end of the driveway, she'll walk to the end of the earth. So, so when I'm looking at the bylaw, it says types of rental, it says no large-scale events. So I'm trying to picture what a large-scale event is. To a only child having a wedding in their backyard with twenty people is large-scale to them. But to a family of nine having a wedding, large-scale might be two hundred people. So how do we, how do we make Mark have to decide? I'm assuming this would be, Mark would have to decide what is large-scale. So, I mean, I don't want to open up Pandora's box here, but I can just see somebody coming in and saying, well, I'm having a wedding. It's, it's not large. It's not the one that I wanted at the Chatham Barzinn with three hundred people. My family and I have just decided we're going to have a nice, small, fifty people. So how do you have to deal with that, Mark?
My first question would be is, can every car at your event park in the driveway? If you park your car in the street, then you're a large-scale event.
So I'm having all my friends park somewhere else and shuttle them in.
Well.
I'll have fifty people, but I don't have a parking issue.
I guess I'll have to wait for the complaints to come and make an assessment at that time.
Ms. Britta.
You could also do what this, this owner did and have in her leasing document, no weddings, large or small. No weddings, no.
Well, that's what she may have, but I may not.
But that's the kind of thing that could at least help address if they were encouraged to do that kind of thing in the lease document. That would help in some measure address, you know, whether it's large or small, we don't want a wedding.
We can't require somebody to put something in that lease document.
No, I didn't say require. I said she did it voluntarily.
Can't even, excuse me, I think you can't even require that someone have a lease document. I have one, you know. And what I say specifically, because I have had, I, I can tell you twice, I did have weddings. They were allowed by me and they were allowed by what I'd written in my lease because they did not involve more than the number of people who were staying at the house. And so that meant that the people who came to the house to stay told me before, we'd like to have a little dinner celebrating, you know, they, they got married somewhere else, but celebrating afterwards. And no guests, we're all there already. So that was fine. And another time in my mother's house cottage, they came up from Texas to get married. And there were, you know, eight people or so, which was fine for my house. So I don't, it doesn't matter to me if it's a big party, if it's a graduation, if it's a wedding, if it's like, you know, your dream is to do it at mine. If there are more people who are going to be on the property day or night, you, you can't do it without permission. And if someone says, well, we'd like to have a small wedding, you know, fifty people, the answer is no. You know, twenty people, the answer is no. That's not how many people can sleep there. So that sort of takes care, for me, that takes care of everything.
Right, but not everybody is you in this town, I assure you.
I, I, I'm gathering, but.
So here's the other, the, the.
If, if I may, on, on that, this is exactly why we need to tighten, whatever the language might be, where we see some loopholes. I read that as weddings, corporate events, class family reunions and photo shoots. So we've defined what a large-scale event is in the bylaw.
Well, no, we've, we've described events, but not the size of.
Just say no events. We use these as example, weddings, corporate events, that's how we have defined large-scale events.
So no weddings.
Weddings, corporate events, class family reunions, photo shoots. That's how I read.
Then we should take the words no large scale out because it's irrelevant as to whether it's large scale or small scale.
This is exactly why this study is going to be important, I think, Jim.
I think it's simply saying no events, period. You know?
The other interesting part of this is that.
If it's a family.
So I own a house and I own a short-term rental right next door. I can have a wedding in my house, but the people that I'm renting to right next door can't. So they all come to my house. They're still getting the wedding. I, I think it's kind of, I mean, to me, it's kind of silly that I'm a homeowner that I can have the wedding, but the house that I own next door that I'm short-term renting to can't.
As the homeowner, you're having a wedding every weekend because then you're running an event space and then I'm writing a violation on it. So.
And I've done.
I'd like to think I only have one wedding.
Yeah, we've had it happen, actually one on New Hampshire Avenue, the other one's a railway bluff. And, and one of them came to the Board of Appeals and was, they did not get to overturn my decision. So they're not supposed to do that. It was a huge piece of property, had a lot of bedrooms in it, but no place to park. So. And it got unruly for the neighborhood. So.
I'm just thinking this through, it's just what you would have to deal with for some of the, well, it's not going to be large. It's only my, you know, my immediate family.
Like no events, period.
So maybe we should think about when we, we do this, taking the words large scale out and just saying no events.
Events such as weddings.
But you don't have to try to describe, describe to somebody that three people is a large.
They can bring me to the Board of Appeals and appeal my decision too. So.
Well, we'd rather keep it simple for everybody, not make it difficult for you, not make it difficult for the people trying to figure out if they can have a wedding.
We can certainly fine-tune the language and I think that's something that the planning board would do. I'm not sure whether the study is going to show a lot of things on those types of things, but that, that's certainly something that you can.
It certainly gives us the window of time to look at things just like this, Jim.
Last thing, and then I'll sit down. An event, I think, in my own.
What event? The eight-person dinner was a dinner.
Sorry?
Call it an eight-person wedding dinner. Don't call it an event.
Right.
The bylaw says no events, don't call it an event.
Okay. So my daughter, for example, was married on Mantucket at my sister's. But we had a party for not all of the guests, certain guests, and there were, you know, thirty, forty on, at our house. That's my daughter. I don't think it would have been, I mean, I was going to have it and I don't know that that would have been wrong. It's my daughter. Nobody parked. I mean, everybody parked somewhere else or took taxis. So to me, that's a carve-out. Now, if there's some owner who says every time they have a wedding, oh, it's my niece, it's my nephew, whatever, well, you know, probably not. But for families that come, that rent, that pay me money to stay there, they can't have more people than sleep there.
Yep. Thank you.
I don't, regardless of what they are doing.
I appreciate that.
What they do. That's a good.
I was actually going to make a point. Labor, Labor Day weekend, the neighbor two doors down from me or three doors down from me held their quote engagement party. It involved food trucks, it involved fireworks, musicians in their backyard. And they're the owner of the property. So it's rather unusual. Some, actually, some of the fireworks out in the backyard there were better than some of them on the bay that were done by the town of Barnstable. But, yeah, when you get into this conversation of events and things like that and the whole issue of homeowners versus tenants, renters, you know, it's, it's, that's why I'm happy that, you know, we're going to extend your sunset clause because I do think there are a lot of things that, you know, may trigger a lot of things when, when you're talking about rental. It actually talks even about homeowners and the things that are going on in town. So good luck on it all.
Thank you, Christine.
Kathy, is there, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is there anything on subleasing or no subleasing? I don't see it in there.
There is, there is not.
No.
In the current bylaw.
No. There is.
I mean, that's, that can be an issue if somebody wants to lease it for thirty days and then sublease it.
Any other, probably a few things that we didn't necessarily consider when we were going through it the first time. And this is a good time to dive in a little bit more.
It was really quick the last night, if I, as I recall. We, we had a very short timeframe to get it together. Any other planning board questions or concerns that we might engage the public with? I have my friends here who take, because I can't see them, Christine.
There is, there is a person, they haven't indicated.
Okay. Do you want to offer if they have any comments to raise their hand?
Molly Sullivan, do you want to?
Oh, Sullivan.
Sorry, Molly O'Sullivan, excuse me, how dare I, so close to St. Patrick's Day. Would you like to be recognized?
Madam Chair, seeing nobody else interested, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Can I just make one more comment?
No, we have one more thing. We have one, we have written comments we have to go through.
Right, that's what I was going to say. We have no written comments. That's all I want to add.
We need to make a comment or no written comments. Mr. Saban, you were in the, in the, in the middle of making a motion, sir.
To close the public hearing, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
We'll take a vote. Uh, any discussion before? No. Uh, Mr. Saban.
Aye.
Ms. Britta.
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Aye.
Mr. Slovak.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Uh, and the chair as well. I note the time as 6:23. Uh, any further discussion, uh, on this by planning board members?
I just wanted to point out, I think there was a typo in the memo, but is that what we're talking about next?
No, we're talking, we're just talking about, yeah, we're still talking about just the amendment.
Clear.
I, there, there were a couple of, is the, is the memo to the moderator part of this discussion, Kathy?
Yes, because that's what we.
That, that's where I'm going.
For the select board, there was just.
It was the memo to the moderator has 2023 in it.
What?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, it does. In a special town meeting, no less.
Mm-hmm. As, as does what Will is going to bring up after we vote.
That's what happens when you start with the old and.
You mean you're human? It's okay.
I said 2023. I haven't done that all year. I got the date right, but the year wrong.
Any, any further, any further discussion or comment? Okay, um, may I have a motion to recommend zoning article number one to amend section four, 18.6 of the zoning bylaw to extend the expiration date for the sunset clause from November 13th, 2024 to November 30th, 2026.
So move second.
Any discussion?
Is there an amendment to that, um, that Row is going to bring forward?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Saban.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Britta. Mr. Rubenstein.
Aye.
Mr. Slovak.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair as well. Aye. Thank you. Amendment is, uh, passed and will be recommended to the board of selectmen. And we do have a calendar for that.
Do we want to talk about who would explain it at annual town meeting? Just to get that out of the way?
Yes, uh, for the moderator, uh, memo, right? Sure. Any volunteers?
There's annual town meeting.
Uh, April 30th, last Tuesday in April.
April 30th.
That won't be it.
You're committed?
Okay.
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Uh, Ms. Britta will be the, um, the presenter.
My consensus.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
You might regret that, but.
Don't say that, Susan. I just had one question because, um, they're putting together any additional slides for the annual town meeting presentation? I don't think we need any additional slides. I just want to confirm with you guys because I have to give it to them by tomorrow morning. I don't think there's any additional slides for annual town meeting.
Additional to the ones that you shared tonight?
No, this, this is, this is something that I think we would kind of be giving to the board of selectmen at the, right. But the actual annual town meeting, you know how like last year we had the whole extra slides that gave the explanation on the accessory apartments? I just don't think we need anything other than the article itself and then the explanation that's in the warrant.
All we're doing is changing the date.
We don't like want memory pictures of how we were meeting.
Exactly. I'm fine with it. I just wanted to confirm with you guys that we're good with just the, the text and the warrant.
This is more, Cal.
I think so too. Okay.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out the memo to the select board. Is that, is this now the appropriate time?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. Yes, the date on that memo says 2023, but also it does say, uh, number one zoning article, one accessory apartments. And as much as I would love to, I would like to not go back there. So would you please change that to short-term rentals?
I will do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But that was so much fun.
No, it was fun, but it's over. It's, it's fun and over. Those two things are not mutually exclusive. They are the same.
Since we are on the subject of the draft memo.
Oh, yes.
Any other comments from planning board members on edits to it?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wondered if it made sense because I thought it was helpful to have the real numbers, to mention the $1.5 million, not just saying at the last, on the very last sentence at the bottom of page one, local excise tax revenue, maybe actually quantifying it, you know, and approximately $1.5 million. And if you want to mention the wastewater program, go for it, but at least on its face, a million and a half dollars is a lot of money. And I do think it's important to recognize that.
I agree.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Others? We're okay?
I'll just put that 1.47 million in FY 23 maybe parentheses.
Whatever, yeah, however you see fit.
Any other, any other comments on the memo? Anything else with regard to this amendment and the annual time meeting?
So you guys obviously know we're on the March 12th board of, select board, excuse me, uh, meeting. We were lucky to get in before the big public hearing on the budget. So I think we're on at 6:30. I was going to just send, um, in addition to the memo and, and the other attachments, it's just a slightly modified version of the PowerPoint presentation that just kind of gives a brief summary of the, um, hearing comments. And I'll also add that into the memo as well, what, what we heard tonight in, in, in the hearing, and then that'll be what will be, uh, given at the board of selectmen.
Sounds good. Meeting minutes from February 7th. May I have a motion to accept meeting minutes of February 7th?
So move second.
Any discussion? Mr. Saban.
Aye.
Ms. Britta.
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Aye.
Mr. Slovak.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair as well. Any updates? Any committee?
Madam Chair, I got, I got one. So as it turns out, the, uh, Water Resources Advisory Committee meets on the first Monday of the month, and this is the first Wednesday of the month. So what nice timing. And, um, I'll just use the same headline until otherwise notified, "The Wheels of Sewer Justice Turn Slowly." That is the headline. Um, and I'll just repeat, we are trying to work backwards from a very hard deadline of October 31st, 2024, in order to maintain 0% funding and all kinds of other fun things. And I guess I would say there's been some more progress, but I'm not here to say that everything is great. So I think both of those things can be true at the same time. As mentioned earlier, um, this, the state DEP folks have established a working group with the town. They are meeting every two weeks. There have been two more meetings since the last time I shared an update here. There will be another meeting next week. That's all great. There's been a little more movement now on the evaluation of Buck Island Road as well as Bayberry Hills, as well as the state owned property at exit eight. And there has been some movement, thanks to those biweekly meetings, of now moving away from this one tenth of a foot issue with the groundwater discharge permit. And now there's been, like I said, some movement towards either half a foot or one foot because we're trying to generate up to one and a half million gallons a day. So I won't go much farther in terms of that piece of it, but just to say there has been progress. But of course, with some progress comes some other stuff. So for instance, um, both the Bayberry Hills and the, the Mast dot properties are in the zone to drinking water area. So if we start pushing treatment slash treated water into those areas, don't you know, there's going to have to be some work with our friends at the Conservation Commission, which has begun. But I would also venture to say that there will be tens and tens of millions of dollars more possibly, possibly added to the cost of this project. Now, do I know if it's going to go over 207? I can't say that sitting here because way, people way smarter than I are working on all of that. But I do feel that because of this issue where the plant itself is not going to be able to handle everything in phase one, and we're going to have to find these two other sites, that we are going to have to move towards the golf course and to exit eight. And that will then, of course, mean more cost, not just in the environmental aspects, but of course, oh my gosh, we got to build a big old pipe and we got to run it all the way up there now, which we didn't have planned when we first approved this. So I think it's fair for me to say that that is still in question. But our friends at the Conservation Commission, who also sit on the Water Resources Advisory Committee are deep into that. And the good news is they will handle their business. The bad news is we just don't know what the cost is going to be. Yes, Susan?
Is it definite that we're abandoning Plan A and moving to Plan B?
Well, I wouldn't say we're abandoning anything. The plan is still going to get built and the plan.
I know that, but I'm talking about the location. Is it now fairly clear that we're going to have to?
No, I'm sorry. If I wasn't clear, the Buck Island plant will be built.
Right.
Well, first it has to get bitted and then has to get hopefully by October 30th. And it has to get awarded and we have to get the discharge permit to unlock all that. So that plant is still going to get be built there. The question is, how do we treat, how do we treat more than what that site will be able to handle? And that's why these other two locations are being looked at. Does that help? Is that, is that more clear?
Well, can I, can I jump in just to say, it's not treat, the plant has the capacity for treatment. It's where do we discharge?
My fault.
It's a discharge. The discharge side is what the EPA is still, the DEP is still at, at odds with us on. It's not the treatment.
This is the plan that they agreed to for five years.
Well, except that.
Up until a few months ago.
Several months ago when they said, oh, by the way, you can only go one tenth of a foot. And everybody said, what are you talking about? No one ever said that. So that's why it's been slow and steady since Ken and I, sailed past each other like ships on the, ships in the night on the committee. But like I said at the beginning of this little update, there has been progress because of these biweekly meetings. But we're certainly not ready to bid out the plant and that's not good. But we still have, I'd say, from what I'm understanding, we have until about June-ish, maybe July to get the plant out to bid so that it can be awarded. But of course, we can't get that unlocked until this groundwater discharge issue is resolved. And we get the, at least a, an agreement to agree to get a permit, which I think would then free that plant up to be bid. Okay. The, there actually has been some mobilizing and some work being done. Um, hopefully folks who know that, know that. So specifically, um, there will be a groundbreaking on March 14th at 10 a.m. And actually that location will be 170 South Shore Drive, where actually the pump station, one of the pump stations will be located. You can park at the Parker's River, um, beach parking lot. Just as a quick side note, that pump station has to go through a little more ZBA, uh, stuff. I'll use a technical term, but it's, that's happens to be over here, but that will be the location of this. This pump station apparently has to be elevated.
Yep.
Five feet off the ground, five feet up the ground. But it's all going to get taken care of, but that's where this, uh, that will be at 10 a.m. And then as it relates to contracts two and three, that work, you know, is underway. And we've already talked about that, but it's actually real now. I'd say one thing that I brought up has to do with, as you know, there's three more contracts that have yet to be awarded. One is contract four, which has to do with the bridge. And as you know, the bridge itself has been delayed. The bridge work is not going to start until the fall of 25 and the water main work is going to stay with that. But the sewer work, um, that project, you know, is still under conversation with DEP and hopefully we'll get, um, we'll be able to get bid and contracts awarded by June so that the sewer work at the bridge can start after Labor Day and move in and hopefully take about a year. And then hopefully that'll link nicely up with when the bridge work actually starts itself. So that's that. The next one, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'm almost done. The last two contracts have to go from Parker's River to the Barnstable line. They're split in two different portions. And of course, the one I wanted to mention, especially as it relates to my colleagues here, is I said, hey, aren't we building a really big park? Right? Where we're supposed to put in a really big pump station? I said, have you guys, and again, I'm just doing this on behalf of my friends here who put in decades of their lives into this. I said, is it fair to say that you have all communicated about the timing and the sequencing of all this? And thankfully the answer is yes. But I really, it worried me at first because I thought, well, wait a second, you guys are talking about awarding this contract. What about the park? And at least according to what I was told is that the coordination now lives underneath DPW for both projects. The park as well as this particular project, obviously. And, um, they hope to bid that, that, that particular contract in August and then get it awarded in October and then start next spring. Now, I'd have no idea what the timing is of the, of the park, but that at least is of the timing of the sewer part of it. So I hope I did not just throw a few bombs into the room, but I don't think I did. Let's see. I think that's enough. But I, I just wanted to say, like, it feels like there's progress, but you know, remains to be seen how it's all going to turn out.
Why now on your tax bill that says water? That means it's a go.
Oh, sorry. And I should say, at town meeting, uh, and we didn't get this in time, but we'll have it at our next meeting, which is just before when the zoning article, uh, the town meeting, warrant is, is finished. There will be a few, uh, sewer articles, uh, having to do with establishment of betterments because you have to set that up in advance and, um, things of that nature. But we'll talk about that next month. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So Madam Chair, if I could, um, now that the subject of the park has been brought up. There was once a woman in this town, very wise woman, who said to me once, imperfect progress is better than no progress at all. And many of the projects we have in town have imperfect project, progress.
Same with the Riverwalk Park.
So the, the comforting thing was this morning I heard on the radio that Barnstable's Big Dig, uh, intersection is going to be two years behind in completion. So that gave me comfort in knowing that it's a million years to get a drive-in site turned into a wonderful project. So maybe Kathy wants to tell you more.
A little less than a million years, but, um, yeah, we, we had gone out to bid. There were some, uh, irregularities in the way that we had bid it and we had to cancel the bid. Now we are separating out all of what's called the horizontal work, the site work, which is the vast majority of it into one separate phase one contract, which is going to be going out to bid, I believe on March 21st, with bid openings on April 11th. And then we're going to be separating out in a second phase contract, the restrooms. The reason is that they are bid under two different mass general laws. One, uh, deals with horizontal, one deals with vertical construction. Vertical construction has a lot more restrictions. You have to have a DCAM certified contractor. There's not very many DCAM certified contractors, uh, who'd be interested necessarily in doing all of that site work. So we're repaying a premium if we did the whole thing under, um, a DCAM certified contractor. We got some initial information from the AG's office that we didn't have to do that. Subsequently, there was a, a revised opinion that basically said we, we either needed it to be all DCAM certified or to break them up. So we are breaking them up. We feel that that's probably the best opportunity to get the best price, uh, for the, for the project. So hopefully, um, we will open a boards on April 11th, uh, on the vast majority of the prod, uh, they work, um, on April 11th, and we'll be able to quickly turn that around hopefully and have no anomalies in the bids and be able to start construction in, in May on that project. We really have to. And that will probably go through June 30th of the following year. So there will definitely be some overlap with that pump station number three in the Riverwalk Park. And our plans, we have kind of dotted out that area to let the contractor know you don't have access to this. Um, and they'll have to do something, you know, reciprocal with the, uh, the contract for that pump station. But as you know, we've already gone, they, we, we pulled that through the VCOD site plan review process with that pump station. So they have that permitted through, through you guys. And then we're going to wait until we have the bids opened on the phase one before we go out to bid on the phase two, which is the restrooms.
Kathy, how long is the, um, horizontal bid going to be open for?
The actual, the bid, we're, we're doing with the truncated because most of the, um, general contractors have already seen it. It's just a matter of, um, kind of fine tuning the, the quantities. Um, so, so I think it's only three weeks that it's being out to bid.
Any other, uh, committee reports?
Just a quick update on the capital budget committee. Uh, we've completed our work, thankfully, uh, from this past winter, I'll call it, from the capital budget reviews around all the departments in the town. We were waiting on Dennis from the school department. Um, they've completed their side of it. So now we were able to complete the balance of it. It actually is going to be presented next week at the select board meeting. Quite a bit of work went into it. Um, numbers came in under what we originally had projected, which was good, not a lot, but a little bit. And, uh, you know, I think it was all positive. I think everybody got pretty much what they asked for.
And has that already gone through finance committee?
Not yet. It will be recommended as of, I think it's going to, that's going to be part of the presentation, same time.
Oh, the 12th is a very long meeting.
It'll be a long meeting.
That's why it's so good that you were, got the placement that you did. Don't give it up, whatever you do.
Any other committee reports? Okay. Kathy, any?
The only, I'm sorry, open space and rec plan ad hoc committee.
Oh, right.
Is going to be.
We're supposed to have, we're having a meeting next Friday.
Yes, we're having a meeting on. Yes, we're having a meeting on the 15th. We basically, staff and consultants have been taking all of the comments that we received during the September comment review period as well as comments we received from the Division of Conservation and Recreation. Those are the people we need to make happy, your comments and the comments from the CONCOM, and tried to incorporate them into some red line edits that we're going to be going over with the Ad Hoc Committee on the 15th because we are going to be presenting that to the Board of Selectmen on April 2nd.
May I ask a board member a question?
You may.
Is that now the right time for that?
Sure.
Kathy, are you aware of any more movement on the Matickees Reuse Committee since a month ago when we last talked about it? I'm not. I just wanted to know if you were.
I think they approved the charge and that's all I know.
Okay, so, okay, great, thanks.
Correspondents or any staff, I'm sorry, Mr. Saban?
She might be covering it. I was just wondering if we're going to discuss the Attorney General's decision on Article 19. Was that what you were about to do?
Yep.
Never mind.
You could see it over there.
Is that, you mean about the AD, are you talking about ADs or are you talking about something else?
Accessory apartment, yeah.
You're using numbers, Jim, not words.
Yeah, I sent it out to you guys later this afternoon, so a lot of you may not have been able to see it. But the Attorney General's Office did approve our accessory apartment by law, but they did have comments. Those are kind of, I want you to think about these things. They noted that we should be careful with the two-bedroom limitation and rental rights for families. So basically, which I thought was a little strange because two-bedroom, you could still have a family. But there's certain rental right laws and you can't discriminate against families, basically. And they just kind of said, you should be thinking about this. And then they also warned us that the potential changes from the Affordable Homes Act would make, yeah, would basically make them by right, and then it would also eliminate the owner occupancy requirement. In the AG's office letter, it made it sound like they thought that we were doing our accessory apartments by right, but we're not. It's special permit. I did follow up with Town Council on this. I sent it to them. And he said he wasn't too concerned about a first set of comments. This is kind of a common adminision. They basically didn't, they approved it. They just want you to know, well, you may be in a conflict with this other state law. That's what their job is. But he also, you know, he basically said, we should also be mindful of Fair Housing Act issues, but I don't believe this is a cause for alarm. Their second point regarding potential future legislation is important, but is a bridge that we'll cross when we get to it. The last thing that needs to happen is Mary Maslowski, the town clerk, needs to post these provisions. And she's hoping to do that sometime in the beginning of next week. And once it's posted, then it's effective as of the date it was approved at town meeting.
Does she post the comments?
No, she just posts the decision.
Okay. The other thing, as I was rereading on that, there's another provision that if the assess, in the proposed legislation, if the accessory dwelling unit is within a half a mile of a bus station, and I don't know if I were to draw a circle around the High End Transportation Center, it would, it would touch the town of Yarmouth. That's interesting. There are no parking if you are within a half a mile of, and it says a bus station. And that transportation-
It doesn't say transit station, it says bus.
It says bus.
Is that an MBTA station though?
The legislation says bus.
I thought it said transportation centers, but it said-
No, it's, well, they define them ferry terminal, railroad, bus.
And what does the language say? You can't park within a half a mile?
With it, no. If you are within a half a mile of a transportation center, and they go on to describe bus, rail, blah, 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 ferry, you can have no parking.
Parking can be required in your zone.
No parking. You can't have a parking space because they want you to take the bus.
Yeah.
To where? We can all ride for free now. We can ride for free.
But the ferry would also apply. That's closer to the town.
That's even close, that's right on the town line.
But is it town, it's not town line, it's location of the ADU.
Yeah, but it's within a half a mile, if you draw a circle.
All right, I have to look at the map.
I'm surprised they didn't, that's a good point, mentioned, yeah, anyway.
Confirmed that that's not an MBTA route. A year ago, it was only along MBTA routes. So if you are an MBTA town, then it will be applicable.
The language is much broader.
And it literally says you cannot have any parking at your ADU?
Yes, it does.
That's literally what it says?
Yes, you can't require it.
You can't require parking.
This is another reason why it's never going to pass.
Well, no, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood what Madam Chair said, that you can't require park.
You can't allocate a space for the ADU.
If you're within half a mile of a-
You can't allocate a parking space.
Like our bylaw, it says you have to have a parking spot for that.
We require it.
And it would be, they'd say, nope, you don't have to.
Nope, you can't do that.
No additional parking spaces shall be required.
So our friends in-
It won't be required. It's not that you can't have it.
Right.
It's no additional parking spaces can be required. So-
It says no parking spaces.
Read it again, Kathy, please.
It says no additional parking space shall be required for an accessory dwelling located not more than .5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. That's a very good catch with the, yeah. Because we did, we did comment on the one parking space, thinking that we'll have a lot of dual income and there'll be two cars. But that's very interesting.
This is under the Affordable Housing, this is the-
Affordable Homes Act.
Affordable Homes, yeah.
Proposed.
Proposed.
Proposed legislation. They act like it's passed, yes.
I'm wondering, given that the ferry terminal is there and the bus station is there, that we might want to consider sending another note?
Yeah, yep.
And asking that.
And yeah, saying that seems to be, that would be an issue in conflict with what our brand-new approved ADU.
Yeah.
Let's think twice about this.
Oh, until it's, yeah, well, well, I think-
Right now, it's a proposed, Madam Chair. I think we just wait.
That's a good point. I think though, that once our legislators, I think it's important for our legislators to know of our concern because they're the ones who are casting the vote.
If we have to put anything in writing, maybe a conversation.
Okay, yeah. My next update is Mark Forrest, Bill Scott, and myself and Mary Wagan met with some of the staff from Senator Sears' office today to talk a little bit about seasonal communities. They were hoping to flesh that out a little bit more. They didn't provide us with any documents to look at. It was just kind of on the screen and talked about. But you know, they're just going to come up with certain parameters about what would define a seasonal community. Obviously, I think we would apply. And a lot of it was additional funding that would be given and grant opportunities for seasonal communities and just understanding that we're a little bit different because we have such a high short-term rental percentage. So it was, it was interesting and they had started that because they wanted to flesh it out. It was very basic, kind of more of a placeholder in the Affordable Homes Act. But as they move forward and move things along, they're going to be fleshing that out a little bit more. So I did go through all of the comments and they got another fresh copy of this. And basically emphasizing, you know, the water quality issues. And if you have money, make sure that it's money that's towards wastewater that can then be tied to housing because we're not going to be able to expand our housing without addressing, because we're unique here. We have a serious problem with our, with our water quality that may not apply to some of the other seasonal communities that are out there. So it was, it was a good meeting. It was just with their staff, their chief of staff and their director of operations. But it just shows that they're working on more seasonal communities expansion. But I think Senator Sears is mostly working, his main two main issues are the seasonal community designation and also the real estate transfer tax local option. So that's something that he's working on closely.
Kathy, going on Jim's comment about things undefined, do they define a seasonal community?
I think that's what they're trying to do, is to come up with the metrics that would define you as a seasonal community.
You automatically are.
If you meet, you know, four of the six metrics or something along those lines, yeah. And I asked, I go, is it going to be by towns? I hope it's going to be by county because you wouldn't want some communities on Cape, for whatever reason, not meeting the metrics. And I said, you should be very careful that all of the communities in Barnstable County are meeting all of these metrics so that we are seasonal, because we're all seasonal communities.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question on the ADU bylaw? So we got the memo back from the Attorney General's Office and then it has to be posted with the clerk. So what is the, so what's the timing on when folks will be allowed to start?
As soon as Mary tells me she's posted it, which sounds like she's going to post it next week.
Okay. And then the way for us to know, because this has been one of the biggest issues we talked about over the last 14, 18 months, is what's the volume going to be? Once the gates are opened for ADU land, how many customers are going to come streaming through the turnstiles?
I was going to tell you that.
Right, but I'm getting to that. But I'm guessing we're also going to start seeing on a ZBA agenda accessory dwelling unit applications, and that will be our measurement. Sorry, Mark?
Since the bylaw was adopted, well, since it was voted on at town meeting, I've had six inquiries to utilize the new ADU bylaw. So that's, that's where we're at so far.
It'll be really, you know, that is the one thing that none of us actually know, is how is it going to all go?
Were any of them existing accessory family, existing conversions?
Not yet, no.
I know that in the, at least the past four zoning meetings, there has been ADU, but under the old, under the old, under the old provision. So they're, they're moving and they apparently, you know, there's really so little difference between what we had and what we have now that people are, there's been at least one in every meeting because I've been looking at the agenda. So they are still moving.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's certain. Any other updates from you, Kathy?
And then just, we have executed the contract with BSC Group and we are going to be having our LCP kickoff meeting on the 3rd of April.
Do I need to be there?
Do you need to be here? Yes.
Do I need to be?
Here at these meetings?
At this meeting.
No, I'm kidding, at that meeting.
Well, that's at the planning board meeting.
The planning board meeting.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Third is the planning board meeting.
I'm sorry. Yeah, they're going to be coming, you'll get to meet everyone. We'll talk about roles and responsibilities, we'll talk about timeline. We'll get into, deep into the weeds, I think, on the public engagement plan. And then hopefully they'll show some of this ARC GIS example of how that might work and how they're going to set up a project webpage for us and maybe have some interactive ways of getting some input from people on that. Which is, I'm really excited about that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Saban.
I apologize. I meant to bring this up earlier. I'm just wondering, is there a time in the year that we do a review of the bylaws, the actual zoning bylaws? So some, if you do that right now, some things are somewhat dated and don't apply to the right things. I see Mr. Slovac nodding his head as well. So I'm wondering, is there a time that, maybe it's something we should consider on an annual basis of a cursory review of our bylaws and to tweak the things that are dated and correct the things that, there's a lot in a bylaw. So you know, some stuff just, unless we look at it regularly, gets moldy. And I think there's some stuff that, that needs to be looked at. So I guess my question is, is that something that we are considering in the near future? Or could we consider in the near future to do a, maybe if we do a chapter or two a month or something, I don't know. But I just think that it's probably not a bad idea to look this thing over once in a while, considering a few things are antiquated, I guess would be a word, but maybe not the right word, but just as an open comment to them.
I guess I would say we're embarking on the LCP. I think that's the most important thing. It's the number one priority of the Select Board. And I do think, and I don't disagree, I do very strongly feel that a comprehensive review of the entire and possibly rewriting the entire zoning bylaw is not out of, out of the realm. But that's not something-
Can't ask for that, but-
I'm just saying, I think that we need to kind of get as much through the LCP as possible. I know in December, our December meeting, we had talked about a couple tweaks that we would be looking at for the fall special town meeting. So if you guys, I guess maybe if you guys had certain things that you really felt needed to be looked at, maybe you guys can look at them individually and bring them to the board. But I just, I just don't know how much horsepower is going to be available in the near future to address too many things.
I think the, Kathy, maybe you could follow up on it. I think the review that the Deputy Town Administrator is doing on the passes along Route 28, they're doing a study on all the passes along Route 28. I think it's sort of an interesting thing to do because they were looking at relevant opportunities along 28. I think as part of that study. They were, something like that.
Studies?
They were looking, but I think as part of that, I think they were looking at some zoning, what the current zoning was and what-
Look at the Village Center overlay district and possible 40R.
It was just limited to Route 28. That was, so there's a little bit of review there, but not a comprehensive town view, but-
That's the CEDC grant, wasn't it?
Madam Chair, that was a CDC grant, the CEDC grant, absolutely. But the last I knew, because the last meeting I went to, no one had even been hired yet for that study.
Really?
But that was two months ago, the last time I sat in on a meeting, so I don't know.
No, there's, the money is still, yeah, we don't know, no.
I think it might be a case of we might need to go back to CEDC and look maybe for some slightly additional funding because I know that they had originally asked for like $75,000. Certain amount has been used up already, and I'm not sure enough is left for the, the CEDC money was for the marketing study, basically, to look at our, our population, what are the services that our population needs or to draw people with tourism? And then look at different uses that might be beneficial to actually be pushing in the, in the town of Yarmouth. That's one of the economic studies. The other one had to do with what Susan was talking about, which is the Community Planning Grant, in addition to some additional funding from the Affordable Housing Trust, to really look at Route 28, look at our Village Center overlay district, look at potential 40R. And maybe that's not just on Route 28, maybe that's part of the Matickees solution as well. And both of those things are something that we need assistance from the Assistant Town Administrator to kind of move forward a little bit on that, as well as Karen Green, our Director of Community Development, was also looking at maybe the, starting to look at the scope for that second study, the Community Planning Grant as well. So I kind of hinted to her that, you know, we're starting our local comprehensive plan and we want these things to move in parallel. So we need to keep those things moving forward.
There are parts of the VCOD, Kathy, I know I brought this to your attention too, that if you look at it and you read it, whether it's one, two, or three, and then you look at the map, the map identifies the various zones and it points to the Cavalier Motel Lodge, or it points to properties that no longer exist on this map. I mean, handing that to somebody to do a survey at 28, I don't know what they're going to, I just, I think, to Jim's point, I mean, some of this could be updated so that at least it's understandable to somebody who wasn't here in 2012 when they passed VCOD.
I think something like that is something that can be done. So if there's things like that, I just, I'm one not clear on, like, assuming you're going to look at a a chapter or a month or whatever, might be a little bit too aggressive. But if you guys know of certain things and you feel that there should be some tweaking, I've always felt that the VCOD really needs a culling. I think we tried to do it a little bit when we went through it recently for the Riverwalk Park, but it's still extremely specific. We did make it easier to get around by making it changes, most of the changes, if you're not meeting it, you can get it through a special permit from the ZBA versus a variance, which is what it was before. But that needs to be looked at. I think we also need to look at, you know, top of shop housing or additional year-round housing opportunities on Route 28. Right now, if you're not in the VCOD or you're not in the motel, hotel overlay district, you know, it's one. So you know, maybe, maybe we want to look at that. We do have something that allows more than that for employee housing. So if you have an employee, but keeping track of that and is that person who's renting that always an employee? Maybe that becomes something, maybe that could be something that gets tweaked to just be anybody.
He has a new inspector. What are you talking about? Sorry, I forgot. Sorry, that was Kathy.
And design standards. I think we need to look more closely at our design standards and not make them advisory. They need to be mandatory. And if they're going to be mandatory, they need to be better than the architectural site design standards that we have now, which are a little squishy. So-
You should use a camp term when we, when we talk about swim, you know, swimming. Going to happen to go to swim, we call it fundatory.
It's mandatory, Ron?
We say swim, swim group is fundatory today. You should try that. Sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay. So what I'm hearing, Kathy, if I may, is for those of you who are paying attention and are very interested in some things you know, don't appear, that need some attention in the zoning bylaw. You know, Kathy needs your help to understand, I'm looking at a lot of people who are in real estate here. I am not, but you probably are engaged in it to a greater degree and have that professional background. So we can start to take a look, but let's get maybe a list together of just where we think there are some really soft points that we could address quickly. Maybe there's some low-hanging fruit. Kathy's already suggested that for special town meeting, we look at a couple of things. Maybe we can bundle and kind of do a- Kathy's already suggested that for special town meeting, we look at a couple of things. Maybe we can bundle and, and kind of do a whack at it. We're not going to be able to do anything comprehensive because our focus needs to be on the local comprehensive. I think.
And Madam Chair, since I haven't, I've only been on the board for three and a half years, we haven't really done any of this, what you're discussing. Would that require going to town meeting if we're going to start changing things?
Oh.
Eventually, it ends in a process, all that work then ends up at town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right.
Unless it's something like.
If you're looking, what I meant like as an example is what, is what Peter brought up.
That's a separate map outside the VCOD, or outside the bylaw that can be changed right now.
Things we can do that are effective and efficient that don't require, bring it up to date a little bit more. Huge process. Right. In order to actually affect the change.
So that's just a town document, the, the map?
I think so. It's the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah, it's.
Code, coded.
It's on the website. It's not part of the bylaw itself. That's something that can be updated, sure.
Yeah, I mean, it, it references the, you know, I think the VCOD one is the Family Fun recreational area, which is really now moved up to where the water park is. It's no longer where Skull Island is because, I mean, in theory, it's Cavalier's gone. Irish Village is gone. It's now, it's, there's more housing there than there is Family Fun. It's kind of shifted, so it's, and that's more of a.
That's more of a use change, yeah.
Change and, or eraser or something, but I mean, it's, at least that map given to somebody who's hired to come in here and do a survey can find what the map's referencing.
Yes, lots of times we'll have like what's called a housekeeping article, which may hit on a bunch of different sections and just kind of tweak some things.
So in theory, then there could be one a year from now.
It, it depends on what it is.
Theory.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have one update that I, I forgot. I, I attended the Library Planning Committee meeting. Their consultant, Constructive Disruption.
What?
The name of their, Constructive Disruption.
What is this called? I'm sorry.
The Library Planning Committee that's looking at, that took all the survey results from the, from the library's inquiries. I would encourage all of you to watch it. It was the best example of a consultant using our vision plan as the foundation for talking about what the town needs and what the people are saying for the library. They went through each and every one of our goals and lined them up in terms, oh, it was remarkable.
No, it's good.
It was, it was heartwarming to me. These consultants jumped on the vision plan, took it as the foundation for their presentation, quoted.
What meeting was this?
The Library Planning Committee last Thursday evening.
So Leap Day. Two twenty-nine.
It's chaired by George Bavino.
So.
It's at the library.
It's on YouTube, is it?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was filmed, and it was the committee receiving the results. It was a terrific presentation by Constructive Disruption.
Okay.
And they, it was just terrific. And it was, the vision plan came to life. They, they used it as a complete framework to talk about slotting in their findings from this survey about the library, what libraries, what, what people in the town want from their libraries, what our libraries don't provide now. It was terrific. I really would recommend, in fact, I almost wanted to get it on the agenda and have us see it. Take the time for all of us to see it together. It was, and it wasn't that long. It wasn't that long. It was really, and so I, when I listened, you know, I complimented them and thanked them. It was really quite good.
Madam Chair, where were the Art of Constructive Disruption?
You know, I don't, I don't know. I, meaning where.
Libraries build more people off of.
They might be Cape Cod, I'm not sure.
I just, that's what I was curious.
Is it really, you know?
Cape Cod based.
But the presentation by the two primary people was really terrific. Yes.
I really hate to pour water on a raging fire, but I, I had the exact opposite.
Oh, okay.
Not on everything, but on their notion of public outreach. And I sent her an email after that presentation and said I have to take exception to, to the comments about public comment and the level and who was involved, because I emailed all of the associations along Lewis Bay to see if anyone had been coming, contacted about the library, and not, no one except for Hyams Park. And they said they, but they did, they did the survey. No one else I know participated in the, so that's the.
In the survey.
In any public, they were never invited to go to any particular meetings. One set of neighbors went to one meeting, I think, over in South Yarmouth. I went to another meeting in the West Yarmouth Library only because I found out it by accident. So I went up to the library and stayed five minutes because they were doing coloring and construction paper. And didn't think that was, you know, what, I mean, in any event, some of the stuff, they, in terms of the vision statement and what libraries are supposed to know, very, very good. But the whole notion of this is reflective of public comment and everyone got involved and, uh-uh. That's not, not my, not my vision.
No, no, but the, the sample size was relatively small, small, but it was almost 1,000 people. Because they, they, they actually referenced the fact that they said they had more than the vision statement in terms of the number of participants in the surveys. And I corrected them because we had more. I don't know.
Good for you.
What, they, they had used some number that I, I knew, I knew what our numbers were. But, but I think you get five, 600 people commenting, that's a sample size that's going to work.
If, if you're, if, unless your, the sample size is biased.
Well, well, yeah, but that depends on the participation of people in town.
That's my point.
Understanding that it's out there.
That's my point.
Yeah, well.
And I guess they're going to make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes, they are, yes.
Okay.
I did have one other staff update. Okay, what can? I just wanted to, the Cape Cod Commission, they had their economic summit yesterday, and I, I attended. So they're similar to their five-year housing, regional housing strategy. They have a five-year regional economic development strategy, SEDs, comprehensive, probably economic. So they, they were just starting, looking at their, they'd kind of come up with some general topics, obviously related to housing, workforce development, this type of thing. And we're looking for some specific action items from a variety of people. They had some really interesting presentations, presenters, very dynamic. And hopefully that PowerPoint presentation, it wasn't up when I checked earlier today, but will all be on the Cape Cod Commission website. Lot of great statistics about, you know, just, just a lot of good information from the UMass, I'm too tired right now, from UMass Donahue Institute about, you know, people who's migrating out of, out of Massachusetts, who's coming into Massachusetts, you know, how we're increasing our population, how are we getting the workforce that we need. It, it was very interesting. So that process is just starting to have a fight, and they're hoping to be, I shouldn't say just started, but it's kind of like January to June process, and they're hoping to have a draft in June.
And will that be more regional, Kathy, or are they going to have a town base like the housing?
I think it's regional. I, I don't.
More sense.
Yeah.
They're not going to do those town by town.
Town by town. Sometimes what, in the past, what's happened is they will come up with these, the, the things that they're trying to hit on with specific action items, and then they'll ask the towns, do you have any projects that fit into these? And then they see if they can, can do those projects, kind of, and then benchmark it each year throughout the SEDs, through the five years. We, we haven't had something on the SEDs in a, in a while. I'm not even sure how long. Certainly not the current one.
Anything else?
Welcome to a chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Let me think.
Mr. Saban?
Hi.
Ms. Britta? Mr. Rubenstein?
Hi.
Mr. Slovec?
Hi.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
And the Chair. Thank you. So your concern is there.
Seven down.